Well, if you didn't hear, we're actually figures of course, I'd say so. If they's willing here, help the committee a whole meeting for Tuesday since they were really supportive. It's called all.
Stop checking. Here.
Here.
Answer.
Here.
All of the thought.
Here.
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 All of the path.
Here.
All of the. I'm absent.
Alright, we're sending you tomorrow. Um, I have to hear some. I've heard from the minutes from July twenty third and August twelfth. Second, we'll shoot in the second. Any comments or questions? If you can see none, all those in favor of the minutes, please say hi.
Hi.
Who's most? Eyes have just our problem. Uh, our only discussion I had tonight is the results of the twenty twenty five community survey thing, yeah? So we're gonna do that. We'll be remarkable. So we'll help us execute the development, execute this anyway, and then we'll handle the results of someone else's on the back end. So that will allow like run it over staff and Terry's going to lead to the segment.
Okay, indeed. So it was just over a year and a half ago, but we began talking about the community survey. Uh, since the last one took place in June of nineteen. And so then we the public well, that are committing, um, interviews, several consultants, and it was just last September that the council were in the contract of ETC Institute. Um, so with me here is Robert Heaton, a consultant from ETC, and he's gonna share the result of the new.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. It's Kerry Settland. My name is Robert Heaton, and with ETC, I just want to give a little bit about us this time. Those not familiar with this, to the idea of the film, and ETC has been doing business since nineteen eighties, early nineteen eighties, really focusing on the community survey business survey is all the types of transportation services and the types of surveys since the late nineteen nineties, really. And it did last fourteen years, surveyed more than three point six million people. Over thousand different counties and cities across the continent. Today, we're gonna talk briefly about the purpose of Ethanol, why we do this, because it's the whole, it's just what the city most leader topic, one is to be satisfied with perceptions of city services. Support of the ball in the city, especially in town, affected on their family, and these are about the great. I have some other findings based on the deep questions that we asked related to their community and right now summarize the thing wants to know what questions. That city is a little bit, why do you want to do a survey? What are the goals are? For us, we never said that what you're really wanting to do is exactly this satisfaction, this system. You hear from a lot of, a lot of people as individuals, uh, around the community, sometimes hit the wrong question. So let me command the city for wanting to engage with the community and help, help on a whole group of people and what their values must involve them. And help in terms of support for development around the city. And we want to compare here performance, your other communities to help you with, otherwise it's just, it's just you're by itself. We don't have that comparison to very valid. So as Kerry said, we've used the survey by mail and online, and May and June actually this year. The goal was four hundred completed surveys, which would have given us a plus or minus five percent margin of error. Their community is very engaged, very willing to share their opinions and and response to what we set out. We had a word with some hundred and five they did surveys back. That is really, it's really phenomenal in our business. And you can see it reduced margin of error to plus or minus three point seven percent. It also has additional eleven hundred or so. We're not part of the random survey, but share their needs to people where there's some opportunity to share. Very engaged community, everything, everything was possibly on, uh, council and your staff being open to public access line. To give you an idea, nice of you slides, we're gonna get your, my name is Kerry. Just a big, well, this is a, this is a, I don't know, so that we show the red dots. We don't share any, we service, I think, the same continental. Uh, probably do go down a lot of the shows that they're wanting to know. Up there. No responses. They don't share any, any individual, this palace, ask for this next slide. So how long have you been a resident? That quantity, forty two percent have been um, with the city, living in the city, more than twenty one years. If that's in the beginning to break down there, um, a people who for five years would last, five to ten, and so on, next slide. All the answers were also lower than ten. Slide. I'm gonna do a little assessment, actually perception of city services. So this, before we jump right in here, I'm wanting to kind of, um, let you know how, how this is going to happen. Responses may vary from slide to slide, and in this particular case, the dark blue base response to, um, response to the question. Response say it could read this excellent. Like you, this is good. Free is average in this case. Low average, I mean, low, my nose, I'm packing by that, in fact, um, I mean, the should bring a color. You can see here at really, the computer have almost hundred percent of responding state that it has a place in the middle, that most accidents are good. Even average state that has a place to raise children, has a place to provide a call. You just see the level of the low average of four, you can add a father as a city, the new direction, like your garden conversion development. Excellent. And perceptions of, of that one, we have the quality of life, the top, we have perception of public safety and reputation of the city, all on the top and all with almost unanimous of being very satisfied or somewhat satisfied. In this case, we degrade as neutral. So keep that in mind as we work the piece of the, as a near certain conditions. Um, we get power well, the city is planning to grow. That is something for some dissatisfaction, you can see, but there's also that thirty one percent quietly, I told guys all the time, I mean, do these, trying to move the deal, sometimes get filed and wet, really wanna make the onion all happy. It would suggest to you that it's easier to educate, communicate, if you're more aware of the staffing on issues and and move them from the neutral to the satisfying, you know, the news, which helps you. But an opportunity there is to stop thinking about following, planning for a while. Um, you have thirty one percent of your sponsors say basically, well, I don't think that I don't have to do. I think it is neutral. That to me is, it's not to be in fact, that's an opening for the city through various reasons. Initial dialogue or information, that is something you have to follow the position. So there's larger major categories of the city's uses, it had a fire town, the fucking mess of me, I don't know, right, all of those. Apologize for a little, probably, this opportunity, see, like, you, you can have, so they see on lines as well. Uh, really, I think issues like, yeah, our attention, we weren't, this is a lot of, you know, that is. Although overall satisfaction, we're very high on road maintenance is not in one of those things I call it, perhaps very good, it's a government, doesn't matter where you are, but that's always gone through, it's the intention that they're about to go to. On the slide. Satisfaction with experience interacting with the talent, the very kitchen space of city, city government, departments, and contact, all this thing. Type of event, um, really, here, these are your results, the opportunities, this is how it's followed. Secretory are very satisfied, they're satisfied. And in fact, we want to receive from overall overall satisfaction of the city service. About support for development in the city, that was a major topic on the slide. So we included some, some maps, so recently, kind of understand what areas of the city you're talking about. And as you measured the level of support for different types of development, this is, uh, residential development, I'm not, that's the other way. Uh, side is the one between those girls, we already know what they are, they are. Uh, do you see quite a bit of assistance that I'm positioned, you know, apartments in that area or towns, which is city of opposite, where the crisis and justice and, um, uncharted lots of that. Excellent. We asked about levels of support for different types of commercial development in Washington, Florida. You can see casual dining, to example, special eaters, the now the door entertainment, protection ways, they're the highest well. And apartments, town, most in, all those rise, you know, very people, those are very, very close. About those, the purple scene made the intercharge, says that I'm developing school, to develop those reviews in the area. People see various strong, forty six percent same base. And twenty four percent. How do you compare the other communities, not in my process, this way, uh, saying speaking to your city, just very important. Oh, see this, uh, type of response. There's a very, very positive effect. In most, most cases, we can see several areas of place to live, to visit there. Uh, you not least, see that the planes, which are the best averages. That's why I'm glad that so. We looked at, uh, asked whether it's, how do you, you're all ready for satisfaction, we should, there's a place to live. See ninety eight point five percent. It's that one, these averages, red and action, and yellows, the US averages. We do these, um, create eighteen point four months, maybe, data relevance, make sure that uh, measure need against, uh, five years, you know, data, data, very rational, possible data, without, you know, embarrasses. Uh, playing to reason consists of this, like, spring. Uh, Wisconsin, Illinois, Minnesota, Missouri, Iowa, South Kansas City. Cities, all the sizes, they'll do. They're, they're not, these are, so not necessarily the size, these are, this is based on the area, so just like we see a national survey that might, that is, capital state. So not picking out necessarily comparison to, um, wide size states. Excellent. See every category, interview, I don't, I mean, our office statistically, maybe meeting that marks the error. Um, see you far seen in fact, some places, you're black, you know, sort of guys. Value see for city tax dollars, that's really, I don't, I don't, a lot of these, we really don't see that very often. Uh, almost seventy percent satisfaction. Value see, that tells me, you're telling the story, doesn't necessarily mean you like the taxes, but it tells me that you're telling the story about where the cities, where the investment is going, you're telling me what you're doing with the tax dollars, and they respond very, very so, so. They should have elected officials, you can see there, well, uh, this day and age, don't only see almost seventy percent satisfaction. So, and, and, and obviously, there's a culture here, that you have development, the council, the staff, where you're giving information, you're giving, you're guiding the citizens. But they all, all kind of come through, uh, these resources. There's satisfaction within the cameras, the state services, made these responses, times, overall, all the prior, and most services to world maintenance. Even though road maintenance is below sixty percent of the well satisfaction, so station is higher, you must have a And I might say this back, you know, considering, quite a few of those are, are, are more of a blindness, but areas we see, whether really impact road payments, you know, recent policy. Uh, and even, even speaking to more speaking, which is that there's the possibility. So some other findings. Yes, about information about how, how residents currently use. How they get their information, using the city, you can see the top three, they're really the city's website, local newspaper, person, city event, um, weekly bulletin, email, and so on, all there. Yes, specifically about all the many that, that responds for legacy, including, from all the vehicles might be to see. And beginning of options, I think your first choice, your first, your first, you can see by far, uh, the, you know, supporters who are that total. And then the way people, they're, they're calling. There's still spots in the role, in the role, some support. Seeing that was. The area residents think, sitting that one means additional road side paths, the side blocks, very, uh, very, 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 uh, and you can see small, almost sixty percent of response, and they think the community decent, the road side paths, side looks, and lots of one percent of them. If that's not level agreement with this particular statement, I want our community to spend more money and they blew it safe with the pedestrians and bicycles. You can see small, they agree with the dark blue, and we didn't like this, we had sixty eight percent of the response. Bring with strong and, you know, that state, want the city to spend more, you know, the road safe on the, on the bicycles. I would suggest that not only being, you can see, public sites, and then a lot of times you're doing things, and you could be moving, so may mitigate this type of issue. But part of, part of the battles, we're getting, sure, we're talking with successes, and to project happily, based on even what you're you're doing, I need to, your own, your issue. That's not satisfactory, the overall value that it possibly received from your parts. Seem very satisfied, twenty five percent satisfied, and fifty one percent. Quite tiny, the level of these additional, past, and each was, you know. Quite a sign, still, seven, six percent satisfied, very satisfied, the category, that's the reason, and, and, uh. So sorry, not we all of these, but, yeah, great, it's supposed to. And the residents very satisfied for the wrong perceptions of uh, the city and the services that you're providing. You can see here, all of these categories, the tiny, these ninety percent higher. Uh, really, really, very strong as well. Then, uh, we have the third, planes, which are, and to, you know, status, just, you know, higher. And personally, all major categories of city services. To that, I hope not to any questions.
Thanks for the overview. It's nice to get some positive feedback. Overall, I think we did really well. Do a little bit of, no, we're assuming, but it's nice to keep back too. I know there's a whole multitude of comments at the back. I just saw, it was like, I don't know, that's the chat GTP thing, a little more than just a little. We're not gonna go through all of here on the floor. The three, or three, they convinced version, they can't stop, but fifteen or twenty pages in it, both white written comments, but there was certainly interesting reading, some of those stuff. So let's open it up for Washington, it's all the wires, first.
Yeah, I mean, you know, first things I want to thank everybody on public, public life. Probably some of the partners, uh, all the hard work that's at, and especially Kerry. I just do the little thing, and Justin, and Doug, which are scary, but, uh, thanks to everybody that did that, and all the different members that had, um, given us some, to give you back, and different inputs that you got from everybody, that was just fantastic, that we got for. Um, I was gonna say, there was, uh, one of the things that we asked before. Um, the whole, for those two, since we have the time, um, if people put online, and it was amazing. First, the nerves, and you're gonna give us that, all that data to the most, to all of the, like, twice the nerve, it's enough, and like a curse under commitment to, there's a very many, there's some, appearances, or they're pretty much, it's very, like, like the other.
To me, honestly, when you, when you got that flow, that, or responses. Statistically, don't you mind, order, and then all the lines, those others, uh, but also, it's tough to say, those, but it was being addressed here, it's not, those people are in random sense, you might have said three thousand, and it's not got, so, so responsible, but it would be, we had it online, and we wanted, and first, we'll respond, we did social media ads, and we do that. That successfully, even so, we're in a lot of, or, uh, very, very, of the live side, wasn't even on, like, uh, that's what's, that's what's we did, I believe, by the city, there were ten, so um, tag their data, to prepare, I don't know about doing the side, I think there's some, to, and, well, yeah. Keep it in glance, and we gave you the tag, or summary of, uh, the, we call it, now, and, or, response, and people, they're gonna see.
I didn't see your issue before. But here, you can see the.
Medicine. Facility, problem, problem, the tech facility, and, and, uh, little, over, to, thinking it could be any of this. The heart was. That is true, and sometimes I could be mind, but, you know, the tiny splash, you're, we should, we should have. Again, for persons.
Well, I was about to ask, can you get a copy of the whole presentation of the company, this? Yeah, I also did, I think you should, and it's nice to you. Okay, perfect, I can put that up at the meeting, that it's maybe, it's, it's a little hard to pick up on, we're not even videoing this, okay? There's a bit of, at least all video, kind of way back, sure, we can work, maybe, you know, I did, oh. All the new parish.
Basically, my, my, yeah, well, ask the five.
Thank you, uh, welcome to more back on, it's all these, it's, did a really good job, I'm appreciative of the, I, for now. Uh, Kerry, I just want to end the back of, uh, the committee, appreciate your harder work on this. And the results are bigger part of your efforts, so just want your powers, it's like, you know, how much you can get into the process. I have similar comment to all the mine, we begin to, side by side with the public first statistical version, so, uh, on that. Um, wanted to express some disappointment in the news, disappointment in the news graphic again, and actually, I don't remind you, because I saw all the women, the plot will hold it up, and yet again, the news graphic is published in article with all of us having actually had a meeting. Uh, to hear your great words, so, so once again, I feel like the public is not being properly. As far as our reactions to the actual survey, but against the policies that were another thing, or would you mind to hear some of our reactions tonight?
No, I think, seeing, discussing the survey, maybe specific policy. What is the most positive?
Great, well, in the future, I'll have a commentary on that central industrial, or central industrial residential, on the southwest. Or becoming more intensive industrial, I think. I think this survey gave us, very well designed. Um, I think this is gonna give us a lot of the data we need for, for decision making, look at for. Uh, so thanks again, uh, for coming here, your work, and to Kerry and the rest of the staff.
Thank you. Uh, again, my, I know, gratitude, for your work, Kerry, you were well. I think this is a real helpful framework, to grab the technical and not, I think, this had brought such a less importance to some, uh, initiatives, especially when you sort of, and it's up to you, you know, you enjoy that first tax base, or maybe coming to, it's, but, like, this. Uh, development is always that, that, I'm watching, you know, with, like, what development will we go like? I, I'm very well, I don't know, must try to, it's, it's, I think.
The, uh, I question this, this news graph article, cannot, how can we get in front of this, and could we make a presentation for the public? Maybe give, like, maybe something, say, something like this, and invite residents, you know, I mean, here, what the results for, I think, worthwhile. Uh, for people to say, hey, this is an opportunity, wanna learn a little bit about what happened in the survey. Come on in and make the presentation for it. Seems like something that might be the best to do, so how do you get the word out?
I think we'll certainly put a link to the, you know, packet materials, to the, people knowing, finish the survey, and really results. So we'll see that we have surveyed, people, while they're interested seeing the results of the, the tour, and that was, since, okay, the news graphic, even if they ju, they jumped around, um, sorry, by a couple days, um. Also, I think we didn't really change the substance of this, on the side of the speaking, on, on my meeting, the last one, or we didn't change the substance, that was in the back of the management. So, uh, there's so much information in here. There's so much information, and then, guys, instead of saying, a whole survey, that's one option. And, but something like this, kind of like the business report, that the city says, I like, yes, kind of quick, secondary summary, fifteen slides, is a, of course, you can see, that would be nice, options, you know, can hopefully, you know, hold. Certainly, the results of the review should is probably worth. It is, we asked you. You have problems. They won't hear all night, time, they're, 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 they're. But I, I, I think that, I, 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 I. I think we did, but it's kind of, from the best, we did, I think, probably, some specific, all of, and stuff. I will definitely take that comment back, and ask the staff to figure out the best way to accomplish that, it's hardly need people to come do, come do a meeting, and, and make this, this if I give people, really interested, they would show it to us. It also may not have seen, seen me a joke enough, I guess, so. Um, we can certainly draw more attention to, they're getting all the comments on the substance of, of the survey. I'll just, I'm just gonna say one thing, one comment I pulled out of additional comments, I had, to the earlier chat, you, you consolidate somewhat, but there isn't, one comment for anyone listening. Uh, one of the major themes that came out of the survey, critical comments was related to the city, county, and state jurisdictional confusion. Certainly, that's due to a lot of construction fatigue, and three straight years of construction. Backline to the high door, to the interchange, and back on our own. And we're now a part of the world of all Tulsa Road, and all Webcom projects, that state is a problem. Um, also, the issues noted in the survey comments related to dissatisfaction with roads that are owned by other jurisdictions, but survey results seem to indicate that people assigned most of the responsibility, most roads in the city, by accidentally confusion or division contact, the current, this balance, so. I don't know how we can, maybe get the word out better, but most of the roads that were complaining about are cars. Uh, I would, I put, I've seen that other jurisdiction, I would suggest, and ask for, and I have, we love it. Know that that's an issue, or some sensitivity, we can frame some questions, so, uh, here. Operating, satisfaction, this, which are, I don't think, is, is, I don't think. And I, I worked for a lot of communities through the boss roles, especially, I'm working on, you know, and, and interstate, or state highways running through, and they experience a lot of, spend, concerns of, you know, not about cities, but it's, you know, about of the, 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 so there are ways to, I already, feature, on that.
The big experience, a lot of, and, and service, American, not about cities, but about, um, the other, which is, so there are ways, I don't know, picture, on that.
And, and actually, we mentioned a couple people too, it was interesting to see, how many comments there were of, uh, schools, and the teachers, and the council somehow has a special schools, and the tax increases, but where the school taxes, uh, that, that, they're stable, but they relate somehow to the, the council, the council has some jurisdictional schools, and really, that, all, uh, so, you know, there's some, there's some, and, and that, but there's some education, there's something about.
Uh, you know, I've been through it, for years, and, uh, and, uh, suffered well with it, and, you know, as you do the, you learn topics. And, and, and looking at the results, there were two questions that really needed, as, all, okay, that we didn't do. So there's still some person, like, run that, but, you know, by, by, with this development, creating, liberating, but, 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 doesn't see any, right, 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 shouldn't say a lot more, and a less.